Follow the order, everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Thank you.
Everybody in Zoom can make sure they get their microphones muted, we're picking up some people.
As everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the executive session and regular meeting as presented. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Both or just one? Both?
Yes, both.
Chuck made a motion to approve both the executive session and the regular minutes, is there a second?
No second.
Brooke's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Gina, is Kathy voting, I can't.
Kathy, are you voting? Can you unmute yourself?
In hearing?
Yep. You're gonna have to keep yourself unmuted if you're gonna vote, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so did you
Approve the minutes? Kathy, did you approve the minutes?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay now. Uh, approval of claims and payroll as presented. Any questions on claims or payroll for Gina? Motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve your claims and payroll.
Kathy made a motion to approve claims and payroll, is there a second? Shirley's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Uh, old business, we have a light elimination project update, I believe that closed today or yesterday, Grant, is that correct? The law?
Yeah, it closed yesterday, so I should take care of that, they were, oh, no, it was a Yeah, it was a, it closed it this morning and they were, it could be recorded, it's actually outside of the way.
So Gina, we can take that off of the old business Updates every week. Uh, ratio of construction phase proposal. We have The updated proposal.
Yeah, I think there's, we had a call to discuss some of the things that were concerned, there's things that are around termination and they should be, um, The drawings remain the property of the town, there's termination, in fact, there's also some information about the The number of projects that would be done upfront and they modified that, so I think everything Was gonna do a little bit of this in my mind, but like this.
Any questions for Grant on Ratio's proposal for the construction phase of the preservation aid state grant?
Is there a dollar amount associated with those proposals or anything?
Uh, the Ratio's contract is for a hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
And is there a start and end date?
Uh, thirteen to fifteen months total and start ASAP, as soon as the contract's over, I believe. Nancy, is that right?
Yeah, we, there's some things that need to be taken care of, so I think I think the timeline was after the first year, the start construction. I have a timeline, but I think we're a little bit delayed a couple of weeks, but I think that it's after, it'll be after the first year.
It would be completed by March of 2024 per the grant requirements?
Yes.
And then they would still have to bid for the construction itself. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I thought this was a construction bid.
This is for, they're, they're the architects. Motion to approve? Shirley's made a motion to approve Ratio's contract for a hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars, is there a second?
No second.
Brooke's second, it's all in favor? Kathy, aye or nay?
Aye.
All opposed? Water sewer tap fees, I don't believe, I, I don't have any time on this, I've been focused on other things, so I'm okay if you want to push back. I just haven't adjusted. Anybody else have any thoughts or want to make a A motion?
We have. We have some problems for.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a motion to table then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Chuck made a motion to table, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we have a public hearing on proposed water rates and charges. Go ahead and open the public hearing on the proposed water rates and charges. Uh, anyone that wishes to make a comment, may do so now by stepping to the podium and identifying themselves. There being no comment, I'll make a, or I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on proposed water rates and charges.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Kathy made a motion to close, is there a second?
No second.
Brooke's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Uh, next up is a public hearing on proposed sewer rates and charges, I'll go ahead and open the hearing on the sewer rates and charges. Anyone wishing to make a comment, may do so now by stepping to the podium and identifying themselves. There being no comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public, public hearing on proposed sewer rates and charges.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Brooke made a motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
No second.
Kathy's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Uh, next up is ordinance 2022-17, this is an ordinance amending the water rates and charges. This is an ordinance amending chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Brookville pertaining to the rates and charges for the use of Of and services rendered by the water work system of the Town of Brookville. Does anyone have, does any of the board members have any questions regarding the ordinance number 2022-17? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-two seventeen.
Brooke made a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-17, is there a second?
No.
Shirley's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Kathy? Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry. Next up is ordinance number 2022-18, this is an ordinance amending chapter 51 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Brookville pertaining to the rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the sewage work system of the Town of Brookville, Indiana. Any of the council members have any questions or comments regarding ordinance number 2022-18?
No.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to 2022-18.
Chuck made a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-18, is there a second?
No second.
Kathy's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Were you in favor?
No.
Okay. Shirley's in favor. Alright, uh Nat, Navya, Flex Bank, FSA, Gina?
Yes, so, uh, each year council has given employees opportunities to participate in a flex bank account for health benefits. Um, this is a free tax benefit to the employees, if they choose to participate. In doing so, the town always matches up to each participating employee, they do not need full-time employees to participate. Um, and then the town usually up-fronts whatever, maybe more to do no permanent paychecks. And then the employees can reimburse each paycheck back to the town. So generally, it's two hundred fifty dollars for participants in the tax month, meaning ten participants. And then the cost per month, um, there are debit card fees because they do have to pay for health benefits. Um, and then participant benefits are eight dollars, so it could be like eight dollars a month for the services for, um, for the service of the FSA. So I was just asking council if they choose to renew or if they want to disuse the service.
Any questions for Gina?
Gina, do we still have employees to take advantage of that?
Yes, currently we have not, uh, eight employees, ten, oh, sorry. Yes, currently we have eight employees that participate. Full-time employees, I should say.
Any questions for Gina? Is there a motion regarding the request for renewal?
I'll make that motion first.
To approve, Kathy?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Kathy made a motion to approve the request to renew with Nat, Navya, um, for the FSA Flex Bank, is there a second?
No, not in it.
Shirley's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Thanks Gina. Uh, we have the DAR Military Veteran Banner Project. So we have a request from the DAR For the military banners, um, so the military banners on Main Street, like poles, will be taken down after Veterans Day and distributed to the families of those who have been honored. We are requesting permission from the board to provide the veteran banner program again for another two years. We have received positive feedback from the community and have a number of names on the waiting list. The banner program has been adopted by many communities throughout the US to honor local beloved military veterans and active duty servicemen and women. We are honored to provide this program for our local citizens. She gives her number, asks the board to call her if we need to, and thanks the board for our consideration and approval. I do think that the, the banners are, are great to have on Main Street, we get a lot of compliments on, on those, so I think it's a, um, very good program and I'm personally happy to, to see them deciding to do it for another two years. Is there a motion regarding the request?
I'll make a motion to approve the banners.
Kathy made a motion to approve the banner request, is there a second?
No second.
Chuck's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? In favor? Shirley's in favor too, Gina. KFC Alley Closure Request. So the members of the KFC, uh, will be frying chicken behind the building. It'd be for the afternoon on the fifth, he's already coordinating with Sheriff Cates and he is good with that. Um, but is requesting to close the alley The afternoon of the fifth, does it give a specific time Gina? I don't think it does.
No, I only see that he said for the PM.
Okay.
I did ask for a time of three, but I'm, like, he said I could be Is that for November? November fifth.
Yeah, I think it's that. Want to say We, we're going to open for the PM, maybe starting at three, is that, what time's our event start?
I don't know, it's time to get that starts, um
So starting at three, you should be
Is that four seven or? That's when it usually starts, start, start at four.
So we can say, I'm gonna put timeframe of three o'clock, let them start up early if they're frying early. I think they'll be fine. Any thoughts from the board members? Is there a motion regarding the request? Okay, Shirley made a motion to approve the request for closing the alley on the fifth, starting at three PM, is that okay Shirley?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second?
No second.
Brooke's second, it's all in favor? Kathy?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Uh, building number nine seventy-six for Donald Lundgren, this is located at one oh eight East Third Street. It's residential use, uh, they'll be constructing a pole barn. The size of the pole barn is sixteen by twenty-three foot nine. They do have the setbacks, the, the last page on the clock plan. And it does appear to meet the, the setback requirements.
They will actually apply for a C O N.
Okay. So our Our permit will be, or our permit will be contingent upon a C O N? Is there any questions regarding the term of the request? Is there a motion to approve contingent upon receiving a C O A from the Historic Preservation Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Brooke made a motion to approve contingent upon a C O A's review. Is there a second? Shirley's second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Another township fire contract. So this is the year This is yearly contract for about the township, um, between the Town of Brookville and Brookville Volunteer Fire Department. For the calendar year of January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Gina, does the service, the contract change this year, is it the same as last?
It's the same as It's the same as last, only the amount had changed, the two and a half percent increase, um, which is sort of the total of the contract for twenty twenty-three is two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Any questions? Discussion for the contract remotes the service? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Chuck made a motion to approve, is there a second?
No second.
Kathy's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Uh, mower request from Brett. Uh, this is for the drop course, so we approved, we included in the budget to place a mower, a pull-type mower. Uh, Brett informed Gina that the, if we order now, it would not be available until March or February, March. Um, if we waited till after the first year, there'd be a cost increase and would delay by how many months?
I believe he said July.
Okay.
January five.
So he's looking to purchase a elastic pull-type mower from Zimmer, uh, the total The total for the mower is twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Any questions?
So, so is it really like a bush hog? I mean, it kind of sounds like it, it's a pull line.
It's one of the, it's one of the bat ones, whatever they call it, what flexes down.
Okay.
Like it rolls with the terrain, it's a pull, it's a pull line, but It's not a bush hog, it's like a regular finish mower.
It's got some mowers and everything, I guess.
I guess, I don't know.
I don't like, I don't like the company anyways.
I mean, I, I know Brett knows what it was, but I'm just curious.
Is the one that they have now in October?
I don't know.
Yes, I don't know, it's been rebuilt this year. When I talked to him, he did price a used one as well, but it says sold. Um, but he said that it's, it's broke down probably once a week, and that's the one that they used for most
Okay.
That number, I don't know any details about the mower itself, I just know that he, he, they made it. I think he said it's twenty-ish years old. The one that's up there now.
Any questions? Is there a motion regarding Brett's request? Shirley made a motion to approve their, their purchase request, is there a second?
No second.
Kathy's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? We have ordinance number 2022-19, this is IDDC Grant Fund. This is, um, Gina, I'll explain this, this is for the, the grant we had on the clock, right?
Correct, this is just a cleanup, uh, type one, it's on my end, I did additional creation and I didn't know if you wanted to establish a fund to go through. So I'm pretty sure I can wait, um, asking for an ordinance for the IDDC mural grant fund that the town was wanting. And that would basically just establish it on, on my, um, bucket.
Okay. Any questions for Gina on the, the ordinance? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance 2022-19.
Brooke made a motion to approve, is there a second? Shirley's second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next is the ordinance number 2022-20, this is ordinance establishing a municipal parking lot here at Grant Fund, Gina, same thing, retroactive? Uh, this amount is for the amount of three thousand dollars, any questions for Gina regarding 2022-20? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, to approve.
Uh, Chuck made a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-20, is there a second?
No second.
Kathy's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Sorry, Shirley. Okay, so, um, it wasn't on the old business, um, but the last meeting, we had Bruce review of Valley House Flats on the agenda for a, um, request regarding the, the real estate property tax abatement. Um, Grant, do you want to explain the resolution that we have here?
Uh, yes, so basically what I did, we discussed various things in the last meeting, I tried to capture what you wanted. Um, but to go back and make sure mechanically worked out to get things, uh, corrected from the county. So it just says that it amends the, the prior ordinance, or the prior resolution from twenty eighteen. Um, they paid the spring installment in full. And rather than trying to recapture it or have a, a split taxing year or something, they had budgeted for that or had accounted in the levy already. Um, what we, what this does is actually say that they're going to pay an entire year of twenty twenty-one available twenty twenty-two. I mean, if they already paid, they're going to pay it in November, and instead, there's going to be a year tax onto the back end of it. Um, as a trade-off to make that work out mechanically. The, uh, initial payment also now applies, they've assigned part of that initial payment to white collar partners. Uh, it'll all seem, so long as the initial payment stuff only applies to the location and total number of units previously specified. Um, the total payment, basically everything else in there would stay the same, that they would be allowed to add along, um Move that over to white collar partners, because it was the same project, it just ended up being in a different entity name. And then the, there's still some outstanding documentation for The twenty twenty-two Page twenty twenty-three here, submitted, if there was some confusion at that point, if the county hadn't handled it, they'd have that one either. So this provides a forty-five day window to cure any of that. Uh, needs cured, I don't think they need to go back and carry it into the twenty twenty-one to the twenty twenty-two, because they're not using it. They need to for some clarity or risk code. Um, but I think they would just need to cure any effects in that, that initial payment in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So it was just those three amendments, uh, I sent this to the county and turned it back to the, from the auditor's office. And she was fine with the way this was set up, so hopefully this handles everything and reflects what you wanted to do based on the last meeting.
I believe it does. Bruce, any questions on?
No.
Sound good? Any questions from the council regarding Resolution overview as presented by Grant?
Nothing has been covered.
Good, okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2022-7?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made a motion to approve, is there a second? Shirley's second, it's all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have ordinance number 2022-21, this is an ordinance amending the safety board of the Town of Brookville, Indiana. Tony?
I think that's it.
Okay.
So, um, again, this, this just goes back to the procedure of, uh, re-establishing the safety board. An additional was enacted last time, but basically the safety board would usually be the town council. This provides a procedure adding alternates on there. In case anyone feels any of the council adventures on any particular matter, uh, and otherwise needs to recuse himself from a particular matter. Uh, so what it says, the town council would have a motion appointing between one and five alternate safety board members. That based on any, if any safety board member recues, any safety board member recuses himself or herself from a particular matter. Uh, such alternates should be appointed in a rotational manner. Um, the rotation would be maintained by the treasurer, and should be called upon to serve as needed based upon the rotation. Such alternates, alternates should be appointed for a term of up to four years, but may be replaced at any time, so long as they're not actively serving on any matter pending for the safety board. Uh, so once they Did start hearing that, that didn't get a situation where someone, somebody gained somebody off the history, and that probably created problems. Um, but this, we have, uh I got a board of commissioners that did this and it works well, um, small town people have issues back and forth, so it cleans up and you can get some people better ready to go if you need to.
Any questions for Grant regarding the ordinance number 2022-21? Let's, let's add it to the ordinance we passed last time, twenty twenty-two fifteen. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to pass. Ordinance one, one, two, three, four.
Chuck made a motion to approve, is there a second?
All second.
All second.
Brooke seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, anything tonight Brooke?
No.
Chuck?
No.
Shirley? Anything tonight? Any other? Kathy, anything tonight?
No.
Gina?
No.
Jess?
I just had, um, I wanted to thank Autumn Williams for the mural and her family, I think they did a great job, we had a good turnout. I just wanted to thank them, that's all I had.
Yep, if you haven't seen the mural, uh, check out the municipal lot by the old Rosenburgers Building. Um, it does look really good and a lot of people anticipate in doing that, so, thank you Autumn. Anything else Jess?
That's it.
Grant? Tony?
No, no.
Do we need to set the safety board meeting?
Yeah, the safety board, uh, we just set it to meeting for probably sometime next week. Uh, the date was out because of election day.
Do we do that here?
What's that?
Do we do that today, now?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're setting it here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I haven't checked the date, I need to remind you to check the current date. Are you talking about this building?
Yeah.
If you give me a date, then I, I just kind of clear it for her.
The night.
The night, okay.
Time?
I'll say it's forty-five. No, I'm sorry, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And this council just set a meeting at the altar, that's it, forty-five.
So Gina, need to set a meeting for six forty-five on the ninth, uh, for the Brookville Town Council, it's a special meeting to appoint alternates on the safety board?
Yeah, okay, so six forty-five is special meeting of the town, seven o'clock, executive session of the safety. Seven fifteen for the public meeting.
Okay.
Hmm? It's on Wednesday, is that? Yes, Wednesday.
Election day is on eighth.
I think, I don't think there's a standing meeting on the second Wednesday, so I think the problem is okay, they're teaching me to confirm it, but.
APC.
It's not the second.
Is it the, is it the second or third?
I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to confirm it, it's not, I guess, we just set the alternate place back to Jones Center.
Yeah, we do that, set the alternate Jones Center. So is there a motion to approve the meeting request as dictated?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting request.
Brooke made a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else tonight? Any comments from the public regarding the agenda items?
First one is, uh...
Please step to the mic.
At the last meeting, you guys talked about not knowing when the clock started for Valley House, the abatement, do you know what that date is yet?
We just extended it by a year, so it started, affected the date of the ordinance. The initial ordinance would have been two thousand eighteen, start two thousand nineteen. And that has not changed what the amendment made, other than we extended it out a year for the additional taxes paid in this year when they shouldn't have been.
Okay, so it's twenty eighteen?
It's still twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. Still, okay, I guess I, the next question is, is the special meeting for the safety board open to the public?
The special meeting of the town board, six forty-five is open to the public. Will close at seven for executive, at seven fifteen.
Public.
The safety will be open to the public.
Thank you.
It was kind of kind of loaded, but it's going to be active.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Brooke made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Shirley seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.